I'd like to call the annual town meeting to order for... what happened? Okay, how's that? Better? I called the annual town meeting to order of May 9, 2022. We have to declare a quorum, Town Clerk, we have a quorum. Quorum has been declared. Okay, if we could, I'd like to... What are we doing? You can't hear me? Sorry. I'll speak closer. How's that? Okay, why don't we start out, please? I'd like everyone to stand. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Face the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, just a couple of quick rules, as we've done before. It's been our practice. If you have a question or would like to discuss an issue, raise your hand, please. I'll call on you. Come up to the microphone. You'll give your name and your address, and we'll take it from there. Okay, but everybody know who everybody is. We have our Board of Selectmen here on my left, Town Clerk, Town Council, interim Town Administrator, and our Finance Committee is down here on the floor to our right. As far as seating goes, I just want to make sure all visitors and non-registered residents of the town that are not registered to vote are sitting in the section in the back. Okay, good. Thank you. All right, let's rock and roll. Okay, to begin with, we're going to have the Town Clerk read the call to order for tonight's meeting.
Plymouth, to either of the constables of the town of Halifax and the county of Plymouth, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Halifax Elementary School in said Halifax on Monday, the 9th of May, next at 6:30 o'clock in the afternoon, then and there to act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof at the Town Hall, Halifax Post Office, and three other public places in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof, fail not, and make do return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the Town Clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid, given under our hands this 19th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2022. Gordon C. Andrews, Ashley De Sessa, Constable Thomas Hammond.
Okay, let's start out then with Article 1. We'll have the report submitted to us by Mr. Andrews, Board of Selectmen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gordon C. Andrews, and I'm the current chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I want to start off by thanking you for attending our town meeting. I'd like to thank our Finance Committee and all of our employees for their hard work on coming up with this year's town meeting warrant. There is a lot of work and effort that goes in to make sure what is presented to our town meeting voters is based on a balanced budget. I would like to thank Mr. Thorne for being our interim Town Administrator and update the town that the Board of Selectmen is working with Community Paradigm Associates, and after the election, the full board will be interviewing the candidates for Town Administrator. Our votes tonight during the annual town meeting affect the budget for the upcoming fiscal year 2023, and our votes during the special town meeting affect the current year's fiscal budget 2022. Our town faces challenges in the upcoming fiscal year. We know that the Police Department has for years supplemented our force with special police officers, and because of the police reform bills that were passed, we will no longer have those special police officers available to fill in shifts when our full-time staff is unavailable. The Selectmen, along with the Fire, Sergeants, and Patrol Unions, have worked together in the past few years with an understanding that we have to work on the contracts to make them competitive with our surrounding communities so that Halifax is not the training grounds for the other departments it has become over the past number of years. We know the same issues apply to Highway, Mixed Unit, and Wage and Personnel employees. We know that our out-of-district Special Needs Transportation costs increased $500,000 for this fiscal year, and that those increased costs will continue into the FY '23 budget. We are also aware of increase coming from the projected increase in the percentage of the population of Halifax students attending Silver Lake for the following year, 2024. We know that inflation will not only affect the town, but our residents and taxpayers. The current cost of home heating oil is $6 per gallon, and the cost of gas is approximately $4.30 per gallon. We are aware of supply chain issues caused by COVID, and the shutdowns have affected all sorts of supplies and parts necessary to purchase equipment. Lead times for vehicles have dramatically increased. And this is very hard to say, so I'm just going to read through it. We have received some bad news this morning. The costs for our senior center relocation project have skyrocketed to $3 million. We will be... I will be amending Article 32 this evening to transfer the cost of $140,000 from undesigned funds to be spent for the construction drawings for the museum for the renovation project to the senior center. After the drawings have been completed, we will then put the project out to bid and present the town with a completed projected cost with an estimate for the average tax bill. Myself, along with the Buildings and Facilities Needs Committee, is determined to finding a solution for our senior center and believe the museum renovation is the best solution to this issue. The committee is determined to find a solution that will work with our tax dollars, and we will continue to research a community build solution as well. We are committed to bidding the project before coming to town meeting with a funding cost for the project. And again, I apologize to everyone. We received an email Friday night after 6:30 with an updated cost. We met as an emergency meeting this morning. We met with a cost estimator. Cost estimate that came out of that meeting was $3 million. He said that the cost that he has set in that projection includes a $600,000 contingency. So the current cost that he has projected is $2.4 million. He discussed a number of issues that he has with other projects and just being able to ascertain whether or not they'd be able to move forward with getting a hold of the supplies necessary. I know that everyone here is extremely disappointed. I am extremely frustrated. We worked for two years on this project, and to find out on Friday night is just unbearable. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight.
No, we haven't... The article will come up during the discussion later on today. I think it's Article 32. So no, this is just a statement. It's just a statement by the Selectmen, a report on the budget. So we'll be discussing the issues later on this evening. Thank you. Okay, right now, I'm going to recess the annual town meeting and open up the special town meeting of May 9, 2022. In order to do that, I need a motion, please.
So moved.
And do I have a second? We have a second. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to recess the annual town meeting and open up the special town meeting. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your red card. Passage unanimously. Okay, what I'm going to do though is read the articles from the special town meeting. You can follow along. There'll be two informational handouts. One will say the special town meeting at the very top, May 9, 2022, and the other one, of course, will be the annual town meeting. We have now opened up the special town meeting, so you can follow along with that. All right, Article 1.
Yes.
Okay. What's that? Okay.
I know. Plymouth, to either of the constables of the town of Halifax and the county of Plymouth, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Halifax Elementary School in said Halifax on Monday, the 9th of May, next at 6:40 o'clock in the afternoon, then and there to act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof at the Town Hall, Halifax Post Office, and three other public places in said town, 14 days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof, fail not, and make do return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the Town Clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid, given under the hands this 19th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2022. Gordon C. Andrews, Ashley De Sessa, Thomas Hammond, Constable.
Thank you.
Article 2.
Do you want to read the Article 2? On the motion on Article 2? All right, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to move Article 2 as it's printed in the handout and as it appears on the screens in the front of the gymnasium?
I move it. So moved.
And do I have a second? Okay, someone like to speak to the motion to the article?
The article is to fund an agreement with the Highway Cemetery Union, giving them a 1% increase for fiscal year '22, which brings them in line.
The motion will give a 1% raise to the Highway Cemetery contract for this fiscal year, as was negotiated by the Board of Selectmen. It's a 1% contract.
In the narrative, anyone want to speak? Clarify any information before we open for discussion?
Again, the narrative is this article is to fund an agreement with the Highway Cemetery Union, giving them a 1% increase for FY '22, which brings them in line with all the other unions in town. Finance.
Okay, do I have the finance recommendation, please?
Finance Committee recommends.
And the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
Okay, would anybody like to speak to the article? Seeing no indication of discussion. There's a motion and a second. Prove Article 2. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Article 3. We're going...
Article 11.
Okay. Article 11, as it appears in your handout, informational handout, and on the screens in the front. Somebody like to speak to this article?
I'll move the article.
I second it.
In a second, I have a motion in a second to accept the Article 11. Let me get the Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Finance Committee recommends.
The Board of Selectmen's recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends. There was no money budgeted in the FY '22 budget because it was believed the fireworks would happen in the July of the new fiscal year, but the town could not... I apologize. So the rear portion of the town barn needs structural work on the roof before it can be repaired. The area is currently unstable. The wall in the rear portion of the building also needs to be repaired.
Okay, does anybody have any... like to discussion? No questions? Seeing no indication of further discussion, I'm going to call for a majority vote. If you're in favor of Article 11, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 11 passes unanimously.
Article 13.
Article 13, again, as it is printed in the handout and is up here on the screens. And would you like to make a motion to accept this article?
I move it.
It's been moved and seconded to Article 13. Could I get the recommendation from the Finance Committee, please?
Finance Committee recommends.
And the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommend.
Okay, would someone like to move this question? I make a motion, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Make a motion? Okay, and any discussion?
The recycling center is a metal building, and the lower portion of the walls and doors are starting to rust and rot. These need to be repaired before it spreads and become more of an issue.
Thank you. Any indication for discussion or questions? Yes, sir. If you could approach the mic, identify yourself, name and address, please.
Frank Johnston, 257 Elm Street, Halifax.
If you can get a little closer, please, to...
Frank Johnston, 257 Elm Street, Halifax. All these funds in here, we got a $1.3 million increase on the COA, and now these are numbers... Are these numbers stand, or are they going to be more? What's going on with these numbers that we're talking about here? There's $80,000 here. How long go those bids procured?
I'll see if I can find that out for you.
And also, what are we getting for $80,000?
See if I can find an answer for you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Joy. Mr. Joyce from the Building and Maintenance Building Commission.
Jerry Joy, 2 Christmas Tree Lane.
You've got to get close, Jerry. You can barely hear you.
Jerry Joy, 2 Christmas Tree Lane. If anyone's been to the recycling center, if you look at the walls themselves, the building was built, and it's a concrete slab on grade. It's probably only about three or four inches above the ground of concrete. And then you have on top of that the metal building. What's happened over the years is snow and rain, and everything else has gone up against it. The bottom track has run it away, and the metal siding of the building is starting to deteriorate. What this money is going to be is we're going to cut about three feet of the siding off, put up a cement block wall, and then replace the siding on top of that cement block wall. That'll give us three feet of protection around the building. The doors themselves, if you went over there, you look at it, there's the same problem. So they have to... The walls around it have to be raised along with this concrete block to do it. That's really where the whole cost is about.
Jerry, you think the second part, too, was about the bidding process or the estimate?
The numbers are put out at the beginning of the year. We did receive prices on it, and $80,000 is the cost that we're going to wind up paying for it.
Sir, if you can address the...
But the people that bid the job, their number standing at $80,000, were locked in on those numbers?
Jerry?
They're locked in for 90 days, so we're looking all right with that. We're within the 90 days, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or opinions? Okay, seeing no indication of further discussion, call for a vote on Article 13. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. A motion... The article passes.
Article 10.
Article 10, as it appears in the handout.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 10, as printed in the handout.
There's a motion and a second. Recommendation from the Finance Committee, please?
Finance Committee recommends.
Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends. Again, I jumped the gun on this article earlier. No money had been budgeted in fiscal year '22 because it had been believed the fireworks would happen in July of fiscal year '23, but the town could not get the first weekend in July, so they moved it back to June 25th as the day of the fireworks.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or questions? Seeing no indication, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Motion passes.
Article 8.
Article 8, as it appears in red. Do I have a motion?
I move it.
In a second? Okay, I have a motion in a second. Could I get the recommendation on Article 8 from the Finance Committee, please?
Finance Committee recommends.
And the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommend.
Okay, would you like to speak to this article?
Due to the winter weather, the town went into a deficit on snow and ice line. This transfer will cover the deficit.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or questions? Yes, sir. If you could approach the mic, identify yourself.
Frank Johnston, 257 Elm. Money was allocated from the federal government in the state for the January storm, and I'm assuming this money reflects the $15,000 deficit from that storm in January? Is that correct?
I'll attempt to find out for you.
And second part of that is, did we apply for that funding for 75% reimbursement from the FEMA for the costs associated with that storm? Since Plymouth County was one of the counties within the state that fell under that, and Halifax was in Plymouth County.
Mr. Andrews or...
Mr. Moderator, I would defer to the Fire Chief.
Yes, sir. Chief Vaveroz, please. Thank you.
They have declared a disaster for that time period. There would be a reimbursement available, but the application period hasn't even started yet. And those funds that we would receive from that application, it usually takes two to three years to receive that money.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments or further discussion? Yes, sir, in the back.
Steve Hayward, Highway Survey Air. It's only $10,000, not $15,000.
Can you go a little closer to the mic?
It's $10,000, not $15,000?
So you want to amend that?
I amend that to $10,000. No, it says $10,000. Oh, yeah, it does say right there.
In our books, it does say $15,000.
So the motion was moved to be from what was in the handout. The handout should say $10,000.
All right, Mr. Andrews, would you mind reading the whole thing with the correct numbers so that everybody's clear on the $10,000?
I move that $10,000 be transferred from Veterans Benefits Line 120 of Article 4 of the May 10, 2021 Annual Town Meeting to Snow and Ice Removal Line 83 of Article 4 of the May 10, 2021 Annual Town Meeting to cover the deficit in snow and ice.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Seeing no indication of further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Article 8, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. The article passes.
Article 5.
Do I have a motion to accept Article 5?
I'm about to move it.
And do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for Article 5. Could you give your name and your address and speak really close to the mic? It's hard to pick you up.
Summer Schmeling, 32 Indian Path Road, and I am speaking as the chairman of the Halifax Elementary School Committee. So during the pandemic, some of the vendors that we used to transport our children, our special education students, to and from their place where they get serviced, went out of business, and we had difficulty hiring drivers to transport our students. Therefore, we need additional funding for this line item. Yeah, that's pretty much it. The rest of it's in the warrant.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommend.
Okay, I have a motion. Okay, and we'll open it up for discussion. Any questions, comments regarding Article 5 as it appears in the handout and on our screens? Seeing no indication of discussion, I'll call for vote. All those in favor, raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 5 passes.
Article 16.
Article 16, take a motion?
I move as printed in the handout.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to accept... I have a motion and a second to accept Article 16 as presented in the handout and on the
The Board of Selectmen recommends, and this article will allow the Selectmen to set a reasonable fee for soil removal and not have to come back to the town meeting to update the amount each time.
And the Board of Selectmen recommends?
Board of Selectmen recommend.
The Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, I'll open it up for discussion. Any questions, comments? Seeing no indication of discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Article 16, please raise your green cards. All those opposed to Article 16, please raise your red cards. Article passes. Article 12, as it appears in the handout. Do I have a motion to accept Article 12?
I move Article 12 as printed in the handout.
And do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to move Article 12. Can I get a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends this article will replace the front door at Town Hall. These are the main door at the parking lot entrance. The doors are over 30 years old and they're not weather tight. Even with weather stripping that was added, they often do not close completely when locked, leaving the building, and the building's been left unlocked.
Okay, I'll open up for discussion or questions. Seeing no indication of discussion, going to call for a vote. All those in favor of Article 12 as is printed in the handout, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 12 passes. Article 15, as presented in the handout.
I move as printed in the, as printed in the handout.
I have, Article 15 has been moved and seconded. Can I get a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
Would someone like to please speak to the article?
The town should save a decent amount of money by being able to build their own sound reducing panels to be used in the library, town hall, and other town buildings where sound, reverber, uh, yeah, where sound vibration is an issue.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions, discussion, or comments? Seeing no indication, I'll call for a vote on Article 15 as presented in the handout and on the screens. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. And all those opposed, please raise your red cards. Article 15 passes.
Article 9.
Okay, Article 9, as it appears in the informational handout and on the screens, just for informational purposes, this will require a two-thirds vote. Do I have a motion? And do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to accept Article 9 as it appears. Do I have a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Apologies. Finance Committee does not recommend.
And do I have a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen, please? Okay, we'll take a recommendation from the Planning Board. Sir?
Planning Board does not recommend.
Okay, your name, sir, and your address, so people know.
Gordon Andrews, 688 Plymouth Street, Chairman of the Planning Board.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a, an article open for discussion, questions? Yes, sir.
Are we going to ask the, Mr. Reed if he's going to present?
Okay, where it's a petitioner's article, we'll ask the petitioner to come up and comment Is Paul Reed? Mr. Reed available? Okay, seeing that he is not available to, well, unless there's an explanation of it No? Okay, I'll open it up for discussion then, please. Yes, if you could come up, identify yourself, name and address, please.
This is Amy Tru, Town Hillside Ave. I just wanted to clarify that there are two articles on marijuana dispensaries tonight. This one, we did not recommend at the Planning Board because it's very wordy and hard to understand. So that's, I just wanted to make sure everybody realized there's two bylaws that have to do with marijuana dispensaries tonight, and this is just one that was a little too wordy.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any comments or questions regarding Article 9? Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Jonathan Seelig, 86 Stoneway Road. I was wondering if it was okay if we could ask the Finance Committee to speak to why they did not recommend this article?
I can certainly ask. The Finance Committee like to expound on the reasoning.
Sure, we really had two reasons. The long-term reason is that as a, as a, as a place to do business, we feel it's important for us to have a set of bylaws that are stable and that we don't move the goalposts on potential merchants that want to come into town. So that was point one. Point two is the, the fiscal tightness, the fiscal stringency that we had to, many of the, many of the decisions that we recommended this year, we, we would have, we would have preferred a different recommendation on things like wages and infrastructure and that, but we don't have the money. So we took a general position that anything that was revenue restrictive, we weren't, we weren't prepared to, to recommend on. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing no indication of further discussion, we'll vote on Article 9. Again, we'll need a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of Article 9, please raise your green cards. All those opposed to Article 9, please raise your red card. Article 9 does not pass. Article 14, as it appears in the handout and on the screens. Do I have a motion for Article 14?
So moved.
And a second? I have a motion and a second regarding Article 14. Could I get a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
I'm sorry, didn't hear.
Finance Committee recommends.
Recommends, thank you. The Board of Selectmen's recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
Okay, would somebody like to speak to this, please?
Narrative on the article is the Building Maintenance Department needs a single location to house their office, tools, and supplies, and a place to park their vehicles in the evenings. The recycle center had the space available. Last year, the Building Maintenance Office was moved to the recycle center, and they are parking their trucks there. This article would allow them to build and equip a maintenance shop. This will allow them to work more efficiently.
Okay, do I have any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 14. All those in favor of Article 14, please raise your red card. All those opposed to Article 14, please raise your red card. What happened? I said red twice? New guy. All those in favor of Article 14, please raise your green card. How am I doing? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your red card. The article really passes. Article 4, as it appears in the handout and on the front screens. Do I have a motion to accept Article 4?
So moved.
And a second? I have a motion and a second to accept Article 4 as presented. I have a recommendation from the Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends.
And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
Selectmen recommends.
Okay, would someone like to speak to the article, please?
The amount was erroneously closed out in the general fund at the end of fiscal year 21. It needs to be put back in so the bills can be paid for that amount.
Okay, any questions, discussion, or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 4. All those in favor of Article 4, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 4 passes unanimously. Article 7, as it appears in the handout. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second regarding Article 7. Could I get a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And a recommendation, please, from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, and the narrative on this is it will fund the unemployment compensation for the next year or two.
Okay, I'll open up. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a voice vote on Article 7. All those in favor, please raise your green card. It's not a voice vote. What do you mean? It's not a voice vote. Well, okay. We'll call for a card vote. All those in favor of Article 7, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Motion passes. Do I have a motion regarding Article 1 as it appears in the handout and on the screen?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second regarding Article 1. Could I get a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
A recommendation, please, from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, and the narrative is this is to fund the agreement with the Patrol Officers Union, giving them a 1.6% increase for the fiscal year 2021, which brings them in line with all the other unions in town for that fiscal year. This agreement also increases their education stipend.
Any questions or comments regarding Article 1? Yes, sir. Please come up to the mic, identify yourself. Good evening, everybody. Rich Sanazaro, Crystal Lake Road. I'm in favor of this. I was one of the town employees who have left this town in the past because of the pay and the pay benefits. 1.6% is nothing. This should be more. Did a lot of these guys dedicate themselves. It's hard work. Not a lot of people understand it. But I've been hearing too many people say that this is a proving ground or a training ground for officers. I got on in 1987. How many guys I've seen go through this department through attrition and leaving? They need this 1.6 as a start. I vote, I say we vote yes. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments regarding Article number one? Seeing no indication of further discussion, I'll call for a vote on Article 1. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Motion passes unanimously.
Article 3.
Article 3, as it appears in the handbook, handout, and on the screens. Someone like to make a motion regarding Article 3?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second regarding Article 3. The recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And the recommendation, please, from the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends this article is to fund a 1% increase for the fiscal year 2022 for wage and personnel employees as well as the treasurer, collector, town clerk, and highway surveyor, which brings them in line with all the union employees in town.
Okay, I'll open up. Any questions or comments?
Mary Gravenese, 98 Clyde O'Boasworth Road. The only question I had is we do not have currently a treasurer, collector, so I don't think that we should put an increase in for that position if we're about to elect somebody who has no experience, no anything. It could be me, and it could be anybody over 18, and I don't think we should put in a raise that would have been Mrs. Zducci's raise because she's been here for four years performing the job. So I think that job should not get the increase. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no indication of further discussion? I'm sorry? You'll have to come to the mic, please.
Yes, I would like to amend the article to put back to the regular, before the 1% increase for just that position.
So what are you amending the amount to?
I don't know what it is. It does, is it listed here? It just has the total amount of 1% for all these wage and personnel people. I know, I didn't get any of that stuff. We do. So the previous salary for the treasurer, collector, before this 1% increase, I would like to amend the article to leave the treasurer, collector, not getting the 1% increase. I don't know what it is. I didn't get, there were no more papers left. Do you have it?
But the problem is we're just going to make it two. Somebody's going to come in, get training, and leave because the difference between what we pay and other towns.
Yes. Your name and address, please.
Barbara Gayna, Pemberton Way. If you'll read, the article is for fiscal 2022, which we are currently in. The treasurer-collector worked from July 1st until the end of April of this year. This is a retro raise for these people. So she was here. To do one for next year is in the annual town meeting, not this special. So this is for what occurred July 1st, 2021, till her end of term, April 2022.
Okay, thank you.
So the total would be $21,984 if that's the motion to amend.
Okay, to speak on the amendment, if that's what you're gonna do.
Bruce Nobles, 55 Lincoln Street. According to the passes at the annual town meeting for the article, it shows the treasurer-collector for the 1% annual raise at $718. Is that incorrect?
I'll try to find out. Hold on.
$731.
Okay, I have a, I need a motion to amend Article three to read the $21,984 and eliminate the treasurer-collector. So there's a, lady made a motion. I need a second on that motion. I have a motion and a second to amend Article three. As discussed, all those in favor of amending the... I'm sorry, I missed you. Yes, sir, please.
So this raise is for an employee that no longer works for the town? Is that correct?
I'll find out.
Yes, sir.
So why are we paying somebody that doesn't work here?
The amount in this article is for July 1st of 2021 until June 30th of 2022. That's fiscal year 2022.
Correct, but the employee is no longer employed. Is that correct?
Yes, the elected official resigned.
So why are we paying that elected official that no longer works here? But why are we paying an employee that no longer works for this town?
Hold on, I'll attempt to find out.
So from my perspective, we were trying to treat everyone equally, and that the employee did work during those times. We didn't have the funds last year at annual town meeting to come up with the 1%. We had the money to pay the unions that agreed to that in September, but we didn't have an article to move forward for wage and personnel employees. So this allows us to match what we did for the union employees for this fiscal year.
Understand, but the employee no longer works for this town. Is that correct? So why would we pay somebody that no longer employed here?
I understand your perspective, but also to the motion itself, the reason why we lost an employee to go to another town is because Halifax pay is not as high as our surrounding communities. So if this doesn't pass, you're going to have somebody come in, learn the job, and then possibly leave because the difference in the pay will be that much greater.
Hold on, sir. Yes, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Sarah Nobles, 55 Lincoln Street. I think the confusion arose when we thought that it was for the next fiscal year, but now that we know it is for the previous fiscal year, I don't think we can vote to only give raises to, what, three of the four people listed here? We can't vote to pick one person out just because they're not working here, that she worked during that year? We need to give her the raise that everyone else is getting. I don't think that we can just pick one out and not give her the raise that everyone else is getting. Just vote to approve the raise for everybody because that's fair. If, I can understand what Mrs. Gravenese was saying about next year not having a tax collector, but we did have one this year, so, this past year, so we just need to vote for the whole collection of employees.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Karen Fava, 66 Clyde O'Boasworth. My question is, so last year, we didn't have the funds, so we denied these raises for these people in this article. Is that accurate?
Hold on, I'll find out for you. Do you know? Yes.
Okay, so we agreed as a town not to give this raise last year, and now we're coming back in this town meeting and ask for it to be retroactive. Am I accurate?
Yes, we didn't present the raise last year, so it wasn't turned down by the town. It was just the funds weren't available to move it forward.
Okay, that makes more sense because if you worked in the private sector and you left your job, and then they decided to give people a bonus or a raise, you would not get it. So I would ask people to vote no.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir. Hold on a second, the gentleman in the back.
Good evening, Jim Keegan, 338 Elm Street. Just to clarify, the article, the increase, for everyone else, if it's voted yes, they're gonna get that retroactive back to what date?
Hold on, I'll find out.
July 1st.
To last July? When that woman was working here, she worked the 10 months, correct? She was working here, correct?
In July.
Yes.
Okay, so she would be entitled to that money if we vote yes for everybody else, in my opinion. It's retroactive. That's her money. And someone else spoke of keeping employees here. I'm a town employee who left in 2009, didn't want to leave, but it's because of the money. So I think that the 1% is not a lot to ask to make it a little more attractive, and that woman who did the job for 10 months should get the retro, just like everybody else.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Lori Costa Klein, 285 South Street. I have a couple of questions, well, a comment and a question. Comment is, yes, it's true that if the person worked in the private sector and left their employment, they wouldn't get a bonus. However, this is a municipality, and I think the rules are different. And my question is, a legal perspective, would this, by not giving this person retroactive funds that her co-piers are getting, would this leave the town open to a discrimination lawsuit?
I can attempt to find out.
Our attorney does not see a basis for that as...
Yes, sir.
Frank Johnston, 257 Elm Street. What does the union contract say?
This is an elected position?
Yes.
Barbara Gayna, Pemberton Way. I just want to clarify, she's not being paid for a year. She'd be July 1st through her end date, which was April 26th, April 30th, whatever. It's not for a full year. It will just be the 10 months that she actually worked during that fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
You did not vote to amend the article, correct?
There was a motion, a second to amend the article, yes.
Okay.
And we haven't voted on that yet.
All right, I would ask that we vote on the entire article, and if we rescind it on this amount, we didn't have the funds to pay this last year, then they should not be coming back this year and asking for that, and then also getting the increase for next year as well. So I would ask the town people to vote no on this article.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, sir.
If I could clarify, it was not that we didn't have the funds last year, it's that we were in collective bargaining negotiations with our union, our union employees. So the sole purpose of this action is to make sure that there is some level of parity between our non-union staff and our union staff. So the reason that this was not voted last year was that these were open issues with the unions. Now that those have been closed, it made sense for us to bring our non-union staff to parity on an increased basis, not on a competitive basis, because as we have seen this year, we have lost some very good employees to much higher wages at surrounding towns. So the whole purpose of this delay was entirely associated with our collective bargaining. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
I respect that, but these positions are not union. If you're not a union, then you're not in contract agreements, negotiations.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no indication of further discussion, we'll vote on Article three as amended. This is on the amendment. All those in favor of the amended figures and numbers, please vote by raising your green card to say, to be in favor. All those, okay, all those opposed to Article 13 as amended, the amendment fails. Okay, do we have to vote it? Have to vote it as originally presented? Okay, so since the amendment failed, now we have to vote on Article three as presented originally in your handout and on the screens. So any further discussion on that? Seeing no indication, I'll call for a vote on Article three as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article three passes.
Article six.
Article six. Do I have a motion to accept Article six?
So moved.
And a second? There's a motion and a second on Article six as presented in the handout and on the screens. Can I get the recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And the recommendation, please, from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, and the narrative is that the last census split the town into three voting precincts, therefore we need a new voting machine slash tabulator.
Okay, any discussion or questions regarding Article six? Seeing none? Oh, sorry, yes, sir. Please come up and identify yourself.
Jim Shade, 97 Colby Drive. Is the new voting machine just...
Could you speak a little closer to the mic?
Is the new voting machine just the same as the other ones we have, or is it a new technology where it's, like, internet or whatever? You know what I mean?
Nope, the voting machines are exactly the same. It's just that we added that extra precinct.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, seeing no indication of further discussion, I'll call for a vote on Article six. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed to Article six, please raise your red cards. The article passes. Yikes. Okay, that completes our special town meeting. I'll require a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. And a second? I have a motion and a second to adjourn the special town meeting, and we'll reopen the annual town meeting. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Motion passes, we close the special town meeting.
All right, Article 31.
Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. Article 31.
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
We had a little error. In the past, we do Articles one, two, three, and four, and then we use the random method of picking it out. So we'll move right to Article two. Do you have a question regarding Article two, Mrs.?
I have a point of order question.
Yes.
Sitting back there...
Can you just come a little closer?
That's my point of order. We cannot hear, we can't understand what's being said, and I know I'm not speaking just for myself. It seems to me that maybe we need to take a few minutes and improve this system. I don't know if it's turning off the fans or what it is, but we just spent a lot of money, and I'm pretty sure many of us didn't know what we were voting on because we didn't hear.
All right, let me do this. Let me take a 10-minute recess, and I'll talk to the audio people, see if we can maybe get some speakers moved back there, or, like you say, kill the fans or whatever. Do we need a motion and a second to take a recess? Okay, 10-minute recess, we'll be back here at 20 minutes after eight. Okay, we'll reconvene the annual town meeting of May 9th, 2022, and we are at Article two. Yes, Raj, to your point of order, please, come to the microphone.
My name is Marge Smith. I live at Twin Lakes Drive, and I would like to recommend that we move forward Article 32 for discussion. This is in reference to the COA building. From what I hear, you're going to recommend tonight that this article be passed over, and I think the seniors that are present here deserve some answers. Thank you.
Okay, let me check. I'll see if what's required to do something like that. Okay, let me check, I'll see if what's required to do something like that. Okay, hi. To answer your question, the bylaw is specific. It says that the articles, aside from articles, the first five, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, have to be done by lottery. That's the Town of Halifax bylaws, there's no way of voting around it unless, of course, it gets picked by the lottery system. That's our bylaw. Okay, moving on then, let's get to Article 2. Submit Article 2. Try that one.
I move that the Wage and Personnel bylaw be amended as printed in the annual town meeting warrant.
I have a motion in a second. Take this one, it's the only one working. Oh, yes. Finance Committee, your recommendation, please.
Finance Committee recommends.
Board of Selectmen's recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, the narrative on this article is, this would add Juneteenth as a designated holiday in the Wage and Personnel bylaws, and give the Wage and Personnel employees a 1% pay increase for fiscal year 2023.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open up to discussion. Any questions, any comments? Yes, sir, if you could come up to the mic, identify yourself, name and address. Is that one working? You got it? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Rob Piccherelli, 20 Paradise Lane. Can you explain to me, as printed in the ATM warrant, what the Assistant Building Inspector position is, what the requirements are, and who currently holds this position?
I'll see if I can get an answer for you.
Thank you.
Specifically, you'd like to know if the increase is effective to the Assistant Building Inspector?
We have a Grade U, unclassified Assistant Building Inspector from 2261 to 2284. Can you explain the position, the requirements for this position, and who currently holds this position?
Let me see if I can get an answer for you.
Thank you.
I don't have a copy of the job description before us, that's not being voted on, it's just the wages.
Anybody from Wage and Personnel or anything that might be able to help us out with this?
Does anyone currently hold this position?
Can you speak a little closer to the mic?
Can any, does anyone currently hold that position?
Don't know, hold on.
No.
I don't know what to tell you, Mr. Piccherelli.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, in the back.
Kyle Gravel, 35 Maryland Way. So, I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 2 of the town warrant. Can you hear me? I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 2 of the town warrant to include a stipend of $3,000 for any municipal employee or municipal department who have not yet received it. Last part? All right. "To include a stipend of $3,000 for any municipal employee or municipal department who have not received it yet."
Where would the $3,000 stipend come from, though?
The federal government, from ARPA and ESER. Those two acts were passed, giving this town federal funds.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
The town meeting does not have the authority to spend the ARPA funds or ESER. ESER is the school committee, and ARPA is the top elected offices of the town, which the Board of Selectmen, so that would be out of order.
Hold on.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
That's not true. The town meeting does have the jurisdiction over that matter, not the school committee.
Where would we find that out? Town accountant? Oh, didn't know that. Hold on. Okay, after discussing final, where did the gentleman go? I did find out that the town meeting does not have the authority to take the funds from that area to pay the stipend. That comes under the direct decision-making process from the Board of Selectmen. So, your amendment, sir, is out of order. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Frank Johnston, 257 Elm Street. What is the total value of the 1% increase under this? It's asking for money, but it just says 1%. What's the total dollar value of that?
Okay, I'll see if I can find that out for you.
What is the total of the 1%? I have to get that from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee have the figures available?
I've got to look it up. I can do it in a few minutes, but I got to look it up. So, the answer to the gentleman's question is $21,770.
That number, for those of you that have the blue sheet, it is at the bottom. That answers your question? Yes, sir.
So, on top of the motion I previously filed, since those funds would be redirected into the current surplus for the town, which stands at $2 million, I believe that that money should be allocated to a stipend of $3,000 to those municipal employees who did not receive that stipend.
It was hard to understand.
I couldn't yell. Too close? Is this good?
Try it.
All right, so, that money that the federal government gave Halifax from ARPA and ESER, that money would be reallocated to the surplus Halifax currently has. So, I feel that that money that was supposed to go as a stipend to the municipal employees, many of which received that money in those funds, but also you have many who didn't. So, that money should be allocated from the surplus to those employees.
To those employees that did not.
Correct. Again.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
The funds from ARPA and CARES and ESER sit in an account that doesn't go into the surplus of the town.
But we could still use the free cash available in the surplus.
So, the free cash has been allocated almost to the dollar for all of the articles here tonight, which have already previously had recommendations from the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. So, there is no free cash that's sitting there that's going to be unallocated from the recommendations for tonight.
All right, very well.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Okay, seeing no indication of further discussion, call for a vote on Article 2 as presented in the handout and on the screen. Came in good. All those in favor of Article 2, please signify by raising your green card. All those opposed to Article 2, please raise your red card. The article passes. Article 3. Do I have to submit Article 3?
I move Article 3 is presented on the handout.
Is there a motion in a second?
I moved.
I have a motion in a second. Could I get the recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
Okay, I'll, would you like to speak to it? Any other further information or anything?
This would give a 1% pay wage increase to the town clerk, treasurer, collector, and highway surveyor positions for fiscal year 2023.
Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing no indication as such, I'm going to call for a vote for Article 3. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 3 passes. Article 4. Someone like to present Article 4? Make a motion? Is it the same?
I move that the town's operating budget as printed in the annual town meeting warrant under the column entitled Recommended FY '23, with the wage lines amended as shown in the blue handout under the column entitled New Recommended Amount, be raised and appropriated from the 2023 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. I'll open it up for discussion. Any questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
Marge Smith, Twin Lakes. I just had one line item, I was concerned about the difference in the salary. Oh, okay. Under the treasurer, collector, clerical, there was a range from budget year fiscal year '22 of 140, 850, and for fiscal year '23, it's 150, 2865. That seemed like quite a jump. I was just curious if there was a reason. Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Could she just repeat those lines that she was looking at again?
Yeah, they separated them out. It's not that they're combined or it's a jump from '22 to '23. They just separated the two, if I understand that correctly.
It's what?
Mr. Moderator, could you ask the Finance Committee if they could respond to this?
And maybe the Finance Committee could.
Yes, for, uh, I don't know, it's for, for line 23, when we considered it was a request for increased hours, that the Treasurer Collector's Office needed, uh, based on our, our fiscal constraints, we want to make sure that we're, that we're collecting everything that we possibly can, and so there was an ask for increased hours for that position. Sorry. Let's try again. So for this position, given the fiscal constraints that were under, there was a request to increase the number of hours for clerical support for the Tax Collector's Office, for Treasurer Tax Collector, and so that was, that is the jump, is an increase in hours authorized for that person to work.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no indication of further discussion? Yes, sorry, missed you. Yes, sir.
I have a question concerning number 63 and number 64.
Yeah, it's tough to hear you, uh.
Okay.
Could you give us your name, too, your name in?
Robert Pichorelli, 20 Paradise Lane.
Yeah, that might help.
Number 63, through you to the Select Board. Can somebody tell me who the current Building Commissioner is as required by the State Building Code, required under 780 CMR 110 R7?
I'll see if the Finance.
Can somebody tell me who the current Building Commissioner is as required by the State Building Code under 780 CMR 110 R7?
Let me see if I can get you a answer.
Mr. Solari is the current Building Commissioner.
So who's the alternate Building Commissioner? As required by the State Building Code under 780 CMR 110 R7?
We currently do not have one.
So, Mr. Solari is the Building Commissioner for the Town of Halifax. Would that be a correct statement?
Is the interim Building Commissioner for the Town of Halifax.
And isn't he also the Building Commissioner for the Town of Bridgewater?
As I believe this is getting into current litigation that 12 taxpayers, including yourself, have against the town, I'm going to ask that any further questions, uh, be reviewed by our attorney.
You don't want to take any more questions?
I, I'm open to taking questions, but I'm going to ask our attorney to respond to them.
Why was the Assistant Building Inspector position removed? Why was the Assistant Building Inspector position removed? You're showing a $0 for the Assistant Building Inspector wages.
The position has not been removed, it's just not being funded.
So who recommended a $0 for the Assistant Building Inspector?
Yeah, if I may, if I may, the, the Assistant Building Inspect, the Assistant Building Inspector role is, uh, it was vacant at the time. Uh, it is a position that's budgeted for about $2,200 a year, and it was intended for, to supplement hours if the Building Inspector was sick, was off, but we needed someone to, to do that. So we had those hours provisioned, but the position is vacant. So at the request of the Building Inspector, we have moved it to a different line item. The money has been moved to a different line item where, in the event that he needs a substitute, he's able to use a contracting substitute from another town to serve the same purpose. So that $2,200, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the exact number, is, is to be used for that purpose, and rather than do it through wage and personnel, he would do it through a contractor on those rare occasions that he would need someone to cover.
So the local, the, the Assistant Building Inspector is now a contractor?
There is no, there is no Assistant Building Inspector, and not a contractor in the sense that we're going to hire a contractor to do that. It will be a qualified Building Inspector from, say, another town or someone else who's certified as a Building Inspector, who would be paid under contract, not by wages.
Correct, so certification, what is our current Building Inspector certified as?
I know it's not coming in. What is your question again?
That, that I think is an answer perhaps.
What is our current Inspector certified as?
That's outside the purview of the Finance Committee. So I've given you an answer on where that budget can flow, maybe perhaps the Board of Selectmen can answer that.
The current Inspector was hired.
Mr. Pichorelli, I, I think basically, uh, what we're saying is we're not getting specifics to specific individuals, we're discussing the position itself and its funding, not, not qualifications, not ability to.
I think the funding is directly related to the qualifications. If you're paying somebody a Building Commissioner's salary, they should be certified as a Building Commissioner.
Okay, I agree with that. However, my personal view, I do agree with that. However, uh, bottom line, that's not what we're here tonight to do. We're here to, uh, talk about the, the budget and, and make it as non-personal as, as possible. It's the position itself, it's not the individual who they'd be using, his qualifications or his.
Well, I, I believe the taxpayers deserve an explanation as to the salary for an individual.
Again, I agree with you, they do deserve an explanation, but I do not feel this is the forum to do that. Not, not a town meeting.
Thank, thank you for your attempt.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion, comments? Yes, miss?
Karen Fava, 66, Clyde, Obazwa.
We could barely hear you.
Just two questions, please. Is line 15 IT wages, it looks like that's a new position, could that be clarified? As well as line, um, 35, looks like that's also a new position. Can we just have some clarification on that, please? Thank you.
Again, line 15, and you kind of faded out there, I'm sorry.
15 and 35, look like that we didn't have any wages for those previously, so I just want to know, are, are these new positions?
I'll see if I can find an answer for you. Finance Committee? Line 15, the first one, the IT wages?
So line 15, our IT wages were pulled out of a separate line where there was, it was not transparent to us where our IT, uh, technical, uh, technical supervisor sat. So we pulled that number out. So it's not zero to something. It, it, there are two elements there. One is a, uh, is a, just a move, straight move of that person's wages to a new line, independent of all others. And then we have also increased the authorized hours for our IT person, uh, just because of all the additional demands, and we're actually paying a lot of it in overtime. So we've, we've upped that anyway so that we've got a full-time IT person for the town, where we used to just have a part-timer. But it didn't go from zero to where it is, it's not a new position, we have an incumbent, uh, but that, that line item was moved, was moved over. Um, with respect to line 35, I don't know if I'll get the language on this right, so maybe Gordon can help me, but the Planning Board needs to have control over its own administrative assistance, so for regulatory purposes, we had to break that out, too. Sorry, we had to break that out as well, um, but it's not a, it's not a net add, that was just a move from a, from one line to another so that it would be more transparent.
May I respond?
Yes.
So, are you saying that, um, the wages are now going to be 52, 297 on item, um, line item 15? 52,000, 297 versus what the, um, book says, 32,362? And were those wages moved from, um, item 16?
Yes, so the base hours were moved from line 16, and then an increase in hours was authorized.
So last year we were paying 135,705, and it looks like now it'll be 162,000, um, four hundred some odd dollars a year? That's a big increase, isn't it?
So there's a, there's a 15-hour increase, about $7,000 in that number. I'm not sure the numbers that you're quoting, I can go back and, and, and work them through, but IT expenditures is largely an increase associated with licenses for the software that we run as a town. And there's, and there is a, a, a significant, but not, not outsized increase on what those IT licenses cost.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Casey, no indication of further discussion? We'll vote on Article Four as presented in the warrant and up here on the screens. All those in favor of Article Four, please signify by raising your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article Four passes. Article number five. Would you like to speak to Article Five?
I'm, I move as printed in the handout.
Do I have a second? Okay, there's a, um, move in a second to, uh, consider Article Five as presented in the handout. Would you like to speak to this?
Finance Committee?
You're right, I'm sorry, forgot. Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Finance Committee recommends.
Uh, Board of Selectmen's recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, uh, the narrative for this. This year, we have added one line to the revolving accounts that we have every year, youth and rec advertising. This will allow youth and rec committee to sell advertising space on the ball field benches and use that money for the maintenance of the fields. We'd also like to point out that the ins, that the inspector revolving account, the building inspectors authorized to spend for wages for plumbing, gas, and wiring inspectors.
Okay, any, uh, questions, comments? Seeing no indication as such, call for a vote on Article Five. All those in favor of Article Five, please signify by raising your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article Five passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll go back to the lottery.
Article 21.
Article 21. Yes, uh, move on, uh, Article 21?
I move Article 21 as printed in the handout.
In a second. I have a, a motion in a second on Article 21. Could I get the, uh, recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, the narrative is the broken system will be replaced by an identical but updated system. We will install a roof over the wash bay to prevent rainwater from going into the drain storage tank. This will bring us up to code with the MS4 storm water regulations.
Okay, would anybody like to discuss, have questions or comments regarding, uh, Article 21 as presented in the warrant? Seeing no indication as such, we'll vote on Article 21. All those in favor of Article 21, please signify by raising a green card. All those opposed, please raise a red card. Article 21 passes.
Article 28.
Article 28. Could present that?
I move as printed in the handout.
I have a motion in a second, uh, to consider Article 28 as presented in the, uh, handout. Could I, uh, get the recommendation, please, from the, uh, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends, and the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, the narrative for this article is the project is an expansion of our existing exterior, exterior video surveillance system to various town buildings.
Okay, open up to any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Jim Keegan, Elm Street. Uh, the cameras for town buildings, uh, where, where are these, what buildings specifically are we looking at, uh, as the school part of town buildings?
Yeah, it was harder.
The town buildings, which buildings, uh, do you have a list of which buildings these cameras would go, and, uh, if so, is the school going to be receiving these cameras?
The school is not part of this implementation, and this was discussed during executive session with the police chief, and, or, um, it being a security initiative that the Board of Selectmen is undertaking.
I didn't hear that, I don't know if everybody else did, I apologize.
The school will not be included in this, this is for other buildings within the town, and the board has discussed the location of the, of the cameras in executive session, and we're not going to disclose the location of the cameras for the buildings due to being, being a security deployment.
So the Board of, the Board of Selectmen decided where these cameras would be placed, correct? And the Board of Selectmen decided that cameras, additional cameras would not be placed in the schools, is that correct?
The Board of Selectmen did not discuss the schools. It's not within our purview of where the camera systems would go in the school. This was looking at other buildings around the town. If there's security cameras that need to go in, it would, would have to go under the school's budget, or a line item, or an article for the school committee to present.
Yes, sir.
Jimmy Shea, 97, Colby Drive. I'm just curious, has there been any, any issues that is warranting, uh, the expenditure of 30, almost $37,000 in cameras?
I'll see if I can find that out. Has there been any?
Yes, there have been. There have been issues. Right, right now, we currently do not have exterior cameras pointing at any of the locations that we're looking to get coverage on. Right now, the town receives all of its tax money on certain days. We have no cameras set up to review any, anybody coming into the building, or anybody parking in the building. There's issues like that, that we've discussed.
So we're talking, uh, is it any criminal issues, or just? So we're talking, is it any criminal issues, or just parking violations?
I don't think there were specific criminal issues, it was a matter of public safety as far as being able to monitor and keep an eye on who's coming in and out. As far as specific crimes committed, I'm sure, maybe if there was some type of check with the police department, but he said there were, he did say there were some issues, whether or not specifically they were criminal or not, they have happened in the past, if that answers your question. Okay. Just lastly, I feel like if I'm going to be part of paying for said security cameras, I'd like to know where they are. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am. I can't hear you at all. I can't hear you.
I know another gentleman came up about the schools. They're not part of the security. With the amount of shootings in schools across the country, I think it's really imperative, if you're going to put security cameras, that they're also be, at least on the outside of the buildings, should something occur, we have video evidence of that for the security of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no indication of further discussion, call for a vote on Article 28 as presented in the... Yes, sir.
My name's Pat Michaels, 306 Elm Streets. So question I have is 30, close to $37,000 for 16 security cameras. We have an IT department, we have building maintenance, what's to take, why can't we go out and buy, let's say, 16-ring wireless cameras that building maintenance can hang up under their actual cost and cost us roughly $3,200? Right? Obviously, if we go out to bid, I get that the town has to get so many bids, but why can't we just buy them outright on Amazon and have building maintenance put them up?
Let me see if I can find that out for you.
Thank you.
Sure. Hold on, I'm going to try to find out for you here.
I'm being told by our IT that the cameras that the previous speaker was discussing would not be within regulation of what the town needs to follow for a security implementation.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Jonathan Seelig, 86 Stoneway Road. Just curious if we checked with other towns to see if there's a similar project there, and what the impetus was to install these cameras?
I don't know what the process was involved in doing that, but let me see if I can find out. Oh, I'm sorry, repeat.
So did we do a study with other towns to see if we would be similar to them, and what was the drive to buy the, to install this camera system for $37,000?
So we discussed the security issues in executive session. I'm not sure that I can talk about all of the reasons why, but we currently do not have exterior cameras on our town buildings. We thought it was important for just a liability. We have all these parking lots, we have no coverage, we have town buildings sometimes that the last person in doesn't lock up, there's issues with the doors, we've had multiple issues where the town buildings have not been closed correctly. For the cost of it, I believe that we're using the same camera system that we have installed for the water department in order to keep us using the same equipment, so we have the same cloud coverage. Again, this would allow for the videos to be accessed through the cloud as well.
Thank you. Seeing no indication of further discussion, we'll call for a vote on Article 28 as presented in the handbook. Yes, sir.
Frank Garibaldi, Beechwood.
Can you get a little bit closer, sir? It's out of here.
Frank Garibaldi, 52 Beechwood. My question is this, that's the cost of installation, what would be the yearly cost to maintain it, and who's going to supervise it, watch it?
See if I can find that out. Is there an annual maintenance?
There's a three-year cost included with that contract, so that will cover the cloud usage for three years.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on Article 28 as presented in the handout. All those in favor, please signify by raising a green card. All opposed, please signify by raising the red card. Majority has it. Article 28 passes. Okay, in order to ask for a standing count, I need seven people to request a recount. So if the seven people could stand up, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, we'll call for a standing count. I'll ask the town clerk to have her counters come up. A little more information on the process of the camera system?
I just want to put out there and be clear that there have been multiple things that have happened this year, though we can't discuss them publicly. That being said, it's not having security cameras on the outside of our buildings to protect our town employees and our residents does continue to open this town up for potential litigation and issue if something were to happen. If something were to happen to one of our employees or one of you, and you decided to come back and say, "Well, you didn't have security cameras to cover us, that's why we're doing this, to try to protect the town."
Okay, we'll call for a standing count, please. Going to call for those in favor of Article 28 as presented in the handout, please stand up, please. And please remain standing until the counters go by, if we have to verify. Or do you want, you want the green cards raised also? Sue, you want the green cards raised also? Yes, those standing, could you raise your green cards also, so we'll make it a little easier to count? Please stand and raise your red card, please. The vote turned out 92 yes, 60 no. Article 28 passes.
I move as printed in the handout.
Do I have a second? Okay, a recommendation, please, from the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
And a recommendation, please, from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends the narrative on this is the same article that we put before the town each year. It sets up the reserve funds in case of unforeseen emergencies during the year.
Okay, any questions, comments, or discussions? Seeing no indication as such, I'll call for a vote on Article 6. All those in favor of Article 6 as printed in the handout, please signify by raising a green card. All those opposed, please signify by raising a red card. Passes unanimously, Article 6.
Article 38.
Mr. Moderator, I move that no action be taken on the subject matter of this article.
Okay, Article 38 is passed over.
Article 44.
I just asked that, and he told me no, he didn't have to. I asked the same question. Our past practice in the town of Halifax has been to vote on the passover. So we're going to vote, all those in favor of passing over Article... Point of order?
We're passing over the article under advice of our town attorney, so that when we present the updated dog and other animals bylaw before the town, that the whole article is in line with state code, so just not a piece of it. They recommended that we move forward with the whole updated bylaw on this section.
All right, so all those in favor of passing over Article 38, please signify by raising your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes to pass over. Now we went to Article...
Article 44.
Article 44. Excuse me. Okay, thank you, I was just informed, made aware that Article 44 will require a two-thirds vote, as opposed to a simple majority. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Paula Hatch, Oak Place, Ann Chair of Silver Lake. I'd like to move the, make the motion as written.
There's a motion then to move Article 44, do I have a second? A motion and a second. Yes, would you like to address your article?
You getting your recommendations?
Let me do that. Finance committee, your recommendation, please.
Our recommendation on Article 44 is not recommended.
Not recommended? Board of Selectmen, your recommendation, please?
The Board of Selectmen also did not recommend.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the narrative on this is this would allow the Silver Lake...
I can hardly hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. This would allow the Silver Lake School Committee to establish a stabilization fund for the capital projects. Funding of this fund would be included in the assessment... Funding of this fund would be included in the assessment that each town pays from their operating budget. Spending this fund would be at the discretion of the Silver Lake School Committee, not the three towns.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussions? Yes, sir.
Ed Whitney, 110 Stony Way Road. I just want to state that I strongly oppose this article, and it removes control from the townspeople in multiple ways, so strongly opposed.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am?
Mary Gravenese, 98 Clyde O'Boasworth Road. Is this the same article they tried to pass last year that gave Silver Lake School Committee or the Silver Lake School System discretionary over all of these funds, and we have no say where any of this money that we give to that fund goes to? Is this the same thing?
Let me see if I can find out for you. If you could just turn down the mic a little bit, maybe you'd hear it.
Turn it down, turn it this way? Is it a height thing? This is a very similar request from last year. The one thing that I will say is extraordinarily different is, this past year, we implemented what we call the tri-town meetings. We meet, this past year, I think it was four or five times, with the Finance Committee and members of the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrators, et cetera. We started by the very first meeting. We have a lot of capital needs at the school. As you know, with your own homes, your own properties, as time goes on, things need upkeep, they need repair. A school system is no different. What we did this year was we were looking to be very transparent and over-communicate with the towns. So we implemented what we call the tri-town meetings. The very first one, we walked for three or four hours, all the school property at Silver Lake, with the town officials, with our capital plan in hand, walking them through what needs to be done and the relative time basis that we think we're working with. So we got all of our needs out there. We met three or four more times, and we've worked very comfortably, very openly, and with a really good rapport with the three towns to get our needs known. What we now would like to do is almost, you know, sort of establish a stabilization fund, a savings account and a line item that the three towns can start to fund, so that we can start to tackle, continue to tackle, these capital items without having to come piecemeal, one by one, as they pop. And I know it's probably a little convoluted to understand, but we really are trying to work with the towns and move our capital plan in our maintenance and upkeep of the buildings and grounds forward in a systematic way.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
So, I was on Silver Lake previously, and this is a good article for Silver Lake. Sitting up here in the Board of Selectmen, passing this article would allow Silver Lake to increase the assessment and put money into the stabilization account. And where we have fiscal issues within the town, if two, the three towns in the district voted to absorb that expense within their budget, the town of Halifax would be required to meet that assessment. Right now, those capital items are not included in the assessment. So, it is a good system for Silver Lake. I don't think it's a good system for the town of Halifax where we are right now.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Niffen?
I just have a quick question. How is the figure determined? Like, does Silver Lake decide how much they want to put in, or is it a percentage? How do we know how much they're gonna want in this account?
Could you answer that question, Pam? Would you go? Paula, to you?
What we envision is, as we continue to have our normal Silver Lake meetings, but very importantly, the tri-town meetings, we would discuss the capital needs with the towns and the officials, and we would kind of digest what our needs are and come up with an amount, you know, every year, that we would ask the towns to fund to get prepared to tackle some of the capital needs. The amount wouldn't be a surprise, it would be part of our tri-town discussions with the towns.
I understand that, but I think the question, correct me if I'm wrong, is bottom line, how is the percentages determined? Is it by student population? Is it by...
It's by the assessment, which is a formula that is, you know, somewhat based on, mostly based on student population. Student population drives a lot of what the allocations are. So, yes.
So, that ain't your question, Mrs. Niffen? Any other questions, comments? Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, you first, ladies first.
So, I just want to make a question-
Give me an address, please.
Sorry. Lori Costa Klein, 285 South Street. I just want to clarify, we're asking for this vote, that in order for it to pass, has to be a two-thirds majority that people want to put that forward for Halifax. But, we are one of three towns, so if we don't pass it here, what happens? Do the other towns pass it, and we're still paying that assessment?
All three towns have to approve the stabilization fund, so if one town doesn't do it, it doesn't move forward.
All right, and does anyone know, because Kingston has already had their town meeting? Is that accurate? Or Plimpton? Are we first?
We would be first to act on this.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, there was, no, yes, sir.
Robert Mullen, 147 Oak Street. Is there a way to find out how much money before we all agree to it? That's a big ask.
Hold on, see if I could find out.
So, please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hatch. The amount being requested would be requested within the assessment every year. So, say it's $100,000 that they're looking to fund in stabilization for the upcoming fiscal year, once this passes. Each town would be assessed based on population, their proportionality of that money. So if it's $100,000, right now it'd be about $33,000. That would be within Silver Lake's assessment.
Is that a guess, an estimate, or are those just like a hypothetical? Because we're gonna approve something every year, we should probably know what it is.
So, the Silver Lake has a capital plan that's projected out to replace all sorts of items that are going to need to be fixed or replaced. So, the costs are going to be, you know, what we're seeing here, they're going to increase. The only way right now that, not to speak out of turn on articles, but we have an article for the tennis courts. The tennis courts are being asked to be funded by all three towns tonight. So in order to do big capital items, they're asking, right now, all three towns have to agree to it. If this passes, and two towns agree to the assessment, then the third town will be required to put that money into the stabilization fund, so they can fund their capital plan.
Okay, will we vote this each year, or is this, once we approve it, it's for the years to come until someone complains about it?
This would allow Silver Lake to have the stabilization fund, and they would decide how much each year, from the assessment that they send to the town, would go into the fund. So all three towns need to vote this in order for that to happen.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
To make it clear, as far as the amount-
Your name, please, sir, could you identify yourself?
It's not necessarily $100,000, it could be any amount. So, what this removes is us as taxpayers' control to vote over what we want to approve for specialist assessments as far as capital improvements to Silver Lake goes. We shouldn't have that ability for us to vote on each assessment removed. It's just not the, you know, it's not the right thing to do. Also, as far as the previous speaker, as far, who was speaking in favor of this, the, talked about talking to the boards at the different towns. We are the voters. Removing our right to vote on it is what this, if we approve this, would take away. And we should not do that.
Yes, sir.
Mel Conroy, 7 Birch Road. If we were to approve this, and the other two towns approved it, and down the road we decided, this is not something that's working for our town, all three towns, would all three towns need to vote for the removal of this, under Mass General laws?
I'll see if I can find out.
I don't believe, once the, once the town passes the article, that they'd be able to withdraw without all three towns withdrawing from the fund.
Yes, sir.
Frank Johnston, 257 Elm Street. So Halifax is one-third of the Silver Lake District. What is the percentage of our students that this would affect us? Is it 10%, 12%, 33%?
So currently, right now, the elementary school has approximately 580 students between the element, between 7th and 8th grade and the high school. I'm guessing it's somewhere around 620 students in that range.
So 1,100 students in the total population of Silver Lake, what percent are we of that?
We are approximately 33% of Silver Lake.
So if the number's 100,000 hypothetically that Silver Lake is asking for, it's $33,000 to the town of Halifax. So we're paying a third of the program.
Yes, sir.
Currently. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Sir, you've had three opportunities already, let me see if I can get to somebody else. Yes, go ahead. You have to get to the microphone and identify yourself, like everybody.
Ed Whitney, 110 Stony Way Road. This article is not about spending $100,000, that was just an example. I just want to clarify that. It could be a million dollars, and it's about losing control. It's not about voting for improvements. We can vote for them, but under voter, our voter control.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing no indication, we'll vote on Article 44, as presented. Again, we're gonna need a two-thirds vote. I'll ask all those in favor of Article 44 to please signify by raising your green cards. All those opposed to Article 44, please signify by raising your red card. Article 44 does not pass.
Article 7.
Article 7, would you like to speak to Article 7?
I move Article 7 as printed on the screen and in the handout.
Okay, there's an article moved and seconded. I'll ask the Finance Committee for your recommendation, please.
Apologies, Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, thank you, and the Board of Selectmen-
The Board of Selectmen recommends, and the narrative for this article is it funds a 1% wage increase for the firefighters and the union.
Okay, any other questions, discussions? Seeing no indication, I'll ask for a voice vote for Article 7. Voice slash green card. As printed in the warrant, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those against Article 7, please raise your red card. Motion passes.
Article 17.
Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, I move as printed in the handout.
Do I have a second? A motion and a second for Article 17 as printed. Recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
The recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, the narrative for this article is we need money for a new bulletproof vest. This article is... Sorry. The narrative for this article is the cameras for the cell blocks have started to fail. This is a critical issue, and we need to be able to monitor the prisoners in the cell blocks as well as other potential security vulnerabilities. We are required by the state to have working cameras for the cell block and could be opening the town up to liability should something occur, and it was not recorded. This article would replace the cameras inside the cells themselves. Without this replacement, our cell block would not pass state inspection, and we would not be able to house prisoners and safely monitor them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, opinions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 17, please raise your green card. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 17 passes unanimously.
Article 22.
Article 22.
I move Article 22 as printed in the handout.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Article 22. Could I get the recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, Article 22's narrative is the South Shore, oh, sorry, the South Coastal Communities Legal Services provides free legal services in civil matters to elders, low-income families, and their children.
Okay, any comments, discussion, or questions regarding Article 22? Seeing no indication, I'll ask for a vote on Article 22. All those in favor, please- All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those against, please raise your red card. Article 22 passes. Article 26.
I move Article 26 as printed in the handout.
Okay, Article 26 is presented and seconded. The recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Board of Selectmen's recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, the narrative for Article 26, both departments, due to overall usage, supply, and maintenance cost and respective environmental surroundings, are in need of investing towards a more secure, modernized, and user-friendly alternative that meets the demands of each department.
Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing no indication as such, we'll vote on Article 26 as presented in the handout. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 26 passes. Article 29.
I move Article 29 as presented in the handout.
Article 29's been moved and seconded. I'll ask for the recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
And the recommendation, please, from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, again, the narrative for Article 29. This truck would replace the 2008 F-350, which is becoming unsafe to drug-related problems, including electrical issues, and will not pass inspection. The new service truck that will have, will have tool storage on one side for distribution work, and on the other side will store tools for water treatment plant and keep them in a safe, keep them safe from corrosion, which may occur if stored inside the plant. This truck will be more versatile than the old one. The truck will come equipped with a plow to assist the highway department to keep the roads safe and passable during the winter storms. Due to the current supply chain and availability causing prices to increase, the cost of the vehicle has increased $3,000 since December 2021.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, questions, or comments regarding Article 29? Seeing no indication, we'll call for a vote. Article 29 as presented in the handout. All those in favor, with your green cards, please. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 29 passes.
Article 41.
Article 41.
I move Article 41 as printed in the handout.
Do I have a second? Article 41's been presented and seconded. Could I, you recommend? And the Board of Selectmen recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, the narrative for Article 41 is that this article will reimburse the Highway Housing Authority, the money charged to them for the last three years in error by Plymouth County Retirement for an employee for the town of Halifax.
Okay, any questions, discussions, comments on Article 41 as presented in your handbook?
Mr. Moderator?
Just a point of clarification. At the, at the time that we put this forward, for the behalf of the committee, on the time that this was put forward to us, we did not have the, we did not have the number, and so we, we elected not to vote on it. So at this time, we, we made no recommendation on this, on this line.
No recommendation by the Finance Committee. Thank you, sir. Any discussion, questions, or comments? See no indication, we'll call for a vote on Article 41 as presented in the handbook. All those in favor, signify by raising your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 41 passes.
Article 45.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 45. I moved that Chapter 55, Section 1, consumption, consumption of alcoholic beverages, open containers be print, be amended as printed in the annual town meeting warrant.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for Article 45, recommendation from the Finance Committee?
We make no recommendation on this item.
The recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, this article would allow the Selectmen to grant temporary liquor licenses for events to be held on town properties. One of the items that came before the Board of Selectmen and what other towns are doing is they might have a wine tasting at their library for a book reading or other such events along those lines. Currently, the town is, with the bylaw the way it's written, you cannot do events like that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing no indication, I'll call for a vote on Article 45. All those in favor, as printed in the handbook, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 45 passes.
Article eight.
I move Article eight as printed in the handout.
Okay, Article eight has presented and seconded. Could I get a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
A recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, the narrative for Article eight is this article funds a 1% wage increase for highway and cemetery workers who are in the union.
Okay, any other discuss, discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing no indication, I'll call for a vote on Article eight as presented in the handbook. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article eight passes unanimously.
Article 11.
Mr. Moderator, I move that no action be taken on the subject matter of this article. And the reason is the current contract already covers this fiscal year, and we didn't need this article.
Okay, a motion will have a, in a second to pass over. Recommendation from the Finance Committee?
That we pass over.
As a recommendation then from the Board of Selectmen?
Recommended to pass over.
Okay, I'm going to vote on, on, okay, any discussion, sorry. Discussion, questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Frank Johnston, 257 Elm Street. Is this the same as Article eight we just passed? The language seems very similar.
Article 11 has to do with the mixed unit. Article eight has to do with the highway cemetery.
Oh, yeah, different. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to pass over Article 11 as presented in the handbook. All those in favor, please signify by raising your green card. All those opposed, please signify by raising your red card. Article 11 to pass over passes unanimously.
Article 20.
I move Article 20 as presented in the handout.
Article 20's been presented and seconded. Could I get a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, Article 20's narrative is this will replace the single-walled tank that we currently use. The new tank will be a double-walled tank with a pump and will bring us up to code with state and OSHA requirements. A recovery funnel and a pump will also be installed.
Any questions, comments? Seeing no indication, we'll vote on Article 20 as presented in the handbook. All those in favor of Article 20, please signify by raising your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 20 passes.
Article 32.
All right, Article 32 to be presented.
I move Article 32 as, I move a transfer of $140,000 to be transferred from undesignated fund balance, free cash in the treasury of the town, to be spent by the Board of Selectmen on all necessary costs and incidental or related thereto the renovations relating to
All right, just double-checking to see what kind of vote we needed to do this on. So it's been, Article 1232 has been presented. Do I have a second?
Okay. So I'd like to speak to the article. So for the past few weeks, we've been moving forward with a council and aging project to take the museum and do an addition on the left side for offices and on the right side to increase the assembly area. So we've had two or three meetings now where we've presented the, what, up until Friday night at 6 o'clock, what, what we thought we were going to be presenting tonight. As of Friday night, as I said earlier, we got a cost estimate in of over $4 million. So now, we had, we called for an emergency meeting of the Building and Facilities Needs Committee. We met at 10:30. At 11 o'clock, we met with the architect and the cost estimator. He estimated the project now to be $2.4 million with a contingency of $600,000, bringing the total cost to $3 million. Again, we, we met this, this morning, and whether or not the town votes to just do the $140,000 to finish the construction drawings, or we move the $1.74 million and go forward with the borrowing, it's not going to complete the project. And I stand, you know, before everyone here, not knowing what is the correct thing to do. To be totally honest, everyone on the committee has an idea of whether or not we go forward with just the construction drawings from free cash, or we ask the town to spend the total of the $1.74 million, move that money, that $1.6 million into the account for this project, and then come back with a completed bid cost once the drawings are done. I'm not sure what's the right move tonight, but I'm recommending moving forward with at least completing the drawings out of free cash.
Okay, any questions, comments? Uh, yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
That's fine. Summersmailing 32 Indian Path Road. I guess my question is just for clarification. If we vote tonight for the amount allocated in the warrant, are we securing that funding for specifically this project? Because I think it's important that we set that funding aside for this project, even if it's going to cost more than we projected originally.
So we, we can, we can amend this motion and do that, but I, I wasn't sure, and I wanted the complete discussion before the town on what to do. I know that we could move forward with $140,000 from free cash and come back with one question that would go on, on the ballot for dead-excluding the whole amount and allocating the $1.6 million to this project.
Can I ask a follow-up question? What would be the harm in allocating and securing the amount in the warrant tonight?
The 140,000?
No, no, no. The amount in the warrant.
The $1.6 million?
The $1.6, yeah. What's the advantage in waiting and allocating all of the money as a whole as opposed to allocating part of it now and making sure it goes dedicated to the senior center project and then voting the rest of it later? What's-
So, so right now, the money is sitting in the bond account for the elementary windows, sidings, and doors, and that's where it's sitting? So that amount of money was, was basically overborrowed because when we, when the elementary school project came before the town, we borrowed earlier than we had to because we were trying to take advantage of the low interest rates, and we ended up getting more money back from the state so that, I'm, I'm not sure, the money's going to sit there. Another, another proposal could come before the town to spend that money for another project. But again, that would have to go before town meeting and would have to be a question on the ballot. So I guess-
I, I understand that. I would just hate to see us in a position where we come back to town meeting with a different project and, and not allocate that money to the senior center. I want, the, the point of this question is to make sure that that funding goes towards this project and not towards something else.
Well, right now, the issue, and as I understand it, and checking with town council, it's the amended issue that's in front of us now. It's been amended to $140,000. So, so basically the-
This article's been amended to $140,000?
I just, I just moved it as that. So i, if there's, if, if town meeting wants to, we could, I could withdraw that motion, and I could move the whole article as previously presented where the $1.6 million would be reallocated to this if the ballot question passes, and the $140,000 from free cash would go towards the project as well. If, if that's the feeling of the town, I'm in support of that. I just didn't know what to offer the town this evening because, again, we got this information at 11 o'clock today.
Okay, so I'm just trying, this is a very complex issue. So just so I'm understanding, right now, you only want to allocate the $140,000 and leave the $1.6 million sitting in the account to potentially, potentially be used towards this or a different project in the future?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Darlene, can you give your name and, and identify yourself as-
I'm Darlene Regan, the Council and Agent Director. And, you know, the $140,000 that you're allocating or actually want to propose in this evening is an option for us because going forward, it's not going to interrupt the project overall. So if we start with that, it's not, it's not going to affect the progress of, you know, the council and aging as we go along. We have a big undertaking in terms of the inflation today and what we have to consider in terms of, you know, building, but I think the project itself is going to happen. It's a matter of taking, you know, caution- is going to happen. It's a matter of taking, you know, caution as to how we're going to do it. So I, I, I'm for the 140,000 at this point. However, it would be nice to allocate the whole fund, you know, everything at this point would be great. But realistically, with the inflation happening and all the different things that we're experiencing as a community and as, you know, this is after a pandemic. So I, I want to do the best for our senior population. And I think we're all here to support that, whether it be aging in place or, you know, a youth, you know, group here. But we're all in support of the fact that, you know, we need this senior center. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Robert, Robert Niffen, 58 Harvard Street. I respectfully, my opinion is that I would ask you respectfully to withdraw your motion and allow us to vote on the original warrant motion. I think it's important that this money be put aside for a council on aging facility. We've been waiting for how many years to build a COA facility. Had an opportunity a few years ago to build one for a million dollars. We bypassed that. We had an opportunity a few years ago for another proposal. We voted that down. I think it's really important to have this money put aside specifically for this project, even if it isn't enough yet. Perhaps the town will come up with the extra, the extra amount. So I respectfully ask that you withdraw your motion and we vote on the original.
Mr. Gaynor also wanted me to point out that we only have a certain time period to move forward with the project and the proceeds of the bond. We have approximately six years from the time that we borrowed the funds to allocate them to another project. And Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, I'm inclined to do that if there's a couple more people that get up and speak and say that that's what they want to do, I will, I will make that motion.
Yes, sir.
My name is Frank Garibaldi, 52 Beechwood Road, Halifax. We are a senior citizen center, I mean, area. And we're all going to be there. We're all going to be senior citizens. Let's wake up. Let's take care of ourselves now because what we're not doing is taking care of us. We're watching for the kids, that's great. Watching for this, that's great. Let's watch for us. We, I use this facility. I use some of the systems in the facility. I take advantage of it. A lot of people don't. That's your prerogative. But it's there if you need it. And they're helpful. They're great people down there. And I say, let's vote for this damn thing and get it over with.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Jonathan Seelig, 86 Stony Way Road. This, in my opinion, this has to happen. This has been a long time coming, and I know this is bad news we all got tonight. In my opinion, I think we keep the original motion that, that was presented to town meeting. And I think if our project is on budget at 2.4, we're looking at about an $800,000 gap. To me, that's worth it, to have a senior center that our seniors can use and thrive and, and be frankly, safe in. So I think it's our responsibility to do it. And in my opinion, that 1.6 that we have is a great head start on this project. For us to have a senior center that is functioning and thriving for $800,000, I think is a bargain, if you think of it that way. And maybe we can do a special or something down the road to bridge that gap. But I think we need to earmark this money for this project to make sure that it doesn't get taken to something else.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Bruce Nobles, 55 Lingan Street, Halifax, Mass. I'd like to move that we vote on the article as written in the warrant. I'm sorry. I'd like to say that we vote on the war, the article written in the warrant.
Thank you. Yes, well. Hold on.
Bob McCarthy, 610 Mumponton Street. Now, if we'd go and take that, the whole amount and transfer it over for future on this, how hard would that be to transfer it back? I just, if we vote on the whole amount, I want to make sure that, that it goes to the town and saying, hey, we, we have to take this money back from here so it'll never pass. So if we have the whole thing go forward now, and we have the money sitting there, it's definitely going towards the council of aging because there's no way that'll go for another project.
Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
It, it would be the same process as tonight. It would have to be an article on town meeting, and it would need a ballot question to move the money.
But unadditive specifically say, we are transferring from the council of aging project to go somewhere else, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Conroy.
Mel Conroy, 7 Birch Road. If it's the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen, I move that we, Mel Conroy, 7 Birch Road, if it's the pleasure of the selectmen, I would like to move the article in full for 1.74 as presented on the screen.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Thank you to the residents for, for saying what you want to do on this. I withdraw the previous motion. And I move as printed in the handout and on the screen. And this would be a two-thirds vote. Mr. Gaynor?
Okay, Article 32 as presented in the handout. I do have a, a second. Could I get the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
I'm sorry?
We recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
Okay, just so everyone knows, this will require a two-thirds vote. Alright. Jean, please.
Hi, Jean Galon, Cranberry Drive. I just wanted to, because we haven't been talking about, so if this passes tonight, we, there's a ballot question on the ballot on Saturday that then also has to be passed. And we didn't talk about that. So I just wanted to be, make sure everybody was clear about that, that if you're in support of this project, you have to go to Saturday and vote yes, because it's a debt exclusion. Is that correct? And I was on the committee and we really talked and talked and talked and we met a number of town, times and we toured all the buildings. And this is, well, at first I was like, well, I don't know, but this is a good plan and a good project. And I hope that everybody can support this because seniors really deserve this, this project. I really think it's going to be a nice building. So that's all. But don't forget about Saturday.
Thank you. Is there anything to comment on that or, you know? Yep. Yes, Mrs. Niffen.
I just have, I just want to clarify something myself. I, I fully support this project. I've supported it every time it's come before the town. But my question is, this money that we're voting tonight doesn't build the building, correct? It, it, we don't know how much this is ultimately going to cost the town. I'm all for putting money aside. I, I'm not speaking against this. I just think it's really important that we all know that we are agreeing to something and we don't know what the final figure is going to be. And at the hearing, I mean, in all fairness, at the, the public hearing on this project, we were assured that we had a turnkey figure. We were assured that the price, the money was there and it wasn't going to impact our taxes. I just don't want to be in that position again. So I just want us all to know that if we vote for this, which I will do, we don't know how much it's ultimately going to cost the town.
That's my understanding, but I'll finalize for sure.
That, that is correct. And we had, we had the architect at that meeting where we presented and we were reassured that the cost projections were correct. I mean, we, we had, I don't know how many meetings that the Buildings, Facilities Needs Committee had with the architect to go over the costs. He was projecting costs between 200 and $250 per square foot. The estimator came back Friday night at six with $750 per square foot. Then this, this morning, when we went and we met with the architect and the cost estimator, we went over the assumptions the cost estimator had made. It changed the project cost dramatically. I mean, he had $95,000 in the cost estimate for kitchen appliances. We're not going with a commercial kitchen. We're going with residential appliances. So it, I agree with the former speaker that we don't know what it's going to cost. And again, that's why I didn't know what to make a motion for tonight. But if, if the town meeting's willing to set aside the money and willing to come back when, once we get through the construction drawings and put out a debt exclusion and another vote at town meeting, I'll be in support of that.
Just, just a quick follow-up. We have a committee that served us really well, I think, in town in terms of the Municipal and School Building Committee. Were they involved in this project? Because they've done a great job in the past of, of putting together our projects and, and seeing them through. But I know, I don't think this is proposed by them. So I'm wondering what their involvement was in this planning process.
I, I can tell you that the Director of the Building Maintenance and whatnot was involved in the, in the, in the, in the process, in the meetings. And the Acting Chairman of the Municipal and School Building Committee was also on the, on the Building Committee, which would be me. I was there. So, yes, they were in full support. Uh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Leslie Anderson, Elm Street. To the prior speaker, she couldn't have said it better. I was thinking the same thing at my chair. In 11th hour, we're hearing about these huge increases, which is a little frightening because we all know what's happening and what we can expect. And you asked us all to look at the citizens checklist when making our decision. And the third item on this says, what will it cost ultimately? And it said, many proposals are like icebergs. Only a small fraction of the total cost is apparent on the surface. So I think it's concerning that we're hearing this information at the very last moment. And now we're expected to make some serious votes tonight and inform the community for Saturday's election. And I am concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitney.
Ed Whitney, 110 Stony Way Road. Just wanted to clarify on between the article and between the question that's going to be on the ballot if we, if we pass this tonight. In the article, it says that this has already been, this 1.6 million has already been borrowed under a debt exclusion and we are paying it back. The article will not act to the tax rate. But then in the question that's going to be on the ballot if we pass this, it says that, shall the town of Halifax be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, the amounts required to pay for the bonds to be issued in order to pay the costs related, relating to the renovations of the Council on Aging Facility, including the payment and costs? What is, why, why would we need the two and a, the exemption, the two and a half if we're already, this money is already under a debt exclusion?
Mr. Moderator, we checked with Bond Council on how we had to reallocate the funds. And they said that in order to reallocate the funds to this project, we had to present it as a debt exclusion. With, with the $1.6 million, it's already being taxed in everyone's tax bills. There's no increase there. So it's a reallocation from this article, from the previous article to this article. There's, there's no, there's no increased cost to the tax bill. It's a reallocation. But we were told in order to reallocate the money, we had to make sure that a question authorized it as a debt exclusion.
Any other questions, comments? Yes.
Amy Drupe, 10 Hillside Avenue. I just wanted to say that the reason that this money can't be spent on any other projects such as the roof at, say, the Highway Barn or things like that is because they're not large enough projects, correct?
For the repair, I believe you're correct. It needs to be a project of like value and size.
Okay. So the money is just sitting in that account and we're losing money to inflation that we're describing at this current time. I think everybody here goes and gets gas in their car. My gas last year, last week, to get a full tank of gas, it was $75. This week, it's 82. The week before, it was in the 60s. So I know we're all surprised at the fact that this is costing more money at the last minute. However, this is exactly why we're trying to spend the money we can't on the smaller projects to get the senior center. And finally, we have a great idea and at the last hour, it's coming back with higher inflation. And next year, it's going to be even worse. So we just need to take care, take care of this now. So it's really nobody's fault. It's diesel prices. It's, well, I could get into whose fault it is, but we won't do that. It's costing so much more to build houses, to put gas in our car. And that's what the whole purpose of this is. So it's not really anybody's fault here. Let's just try to put our best foot forward and get this done.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing no indication for the discussion, we'll vote on Article 32 as originally presented in the handbook. Going to call for, this is a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of Article 32, please raise your green cards. All those who oppose Article 32, please raise your red cards. Article 32 passes unanimously.
Article 14.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 14 as presented in the handout.
Okay, Article 24 has been presented and seconded.
14, 1-4.
Article 14 has been presented and seconded. Can I get a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Can I get a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends, again, the narrative for Article 14 is that article is presented every year to pay for the re-
is presented every year to pay for the recertification, which is now done every five years.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Jen Walker, Sycamore Drive. As part of the gray-haired Exodus, we say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing no indication, call for a vote on Article 14 as presented in the handbook. All those in favor of Article 14, please signify by raising the green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 14 passes unanimously. Article 13.
I move Article 13 as presented in the handout.
Article 13's been presented and seconded. Can I get a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
From the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 13's narrative. To provide the funds to maintain the town roads, and this amount was increased to $300,000 last year. We are asking for the same amount this year.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, discussions, questions? Seeing no indication, we'll vote on Article 3, yes, sir. Jimmy Shade, 97 Colby Drive. I was just wondering where, what roads are you looking to improve? Is there any particular road in town in particular? And also, if it's, you know, 58 or 106, is the state involved in that at all either?
I'll see if I can find out. Do you know? Mr. Hayward. I know that Mr. Hayward would probably answer the question to what he's going to do with the funds, but I know that 58 and 106 are not included in those state funds.
Steve Hayward, Highway Surveyor, and you're correct. Sorry. Like Gordon said, these numbered roads are just numbered roads. They're not state roads at all. They're not state roads. They are state numbered roads. So, we have to take care of those roads. It's not the state that takes care of them. And the $300,000, it's a drop in the bucket these days. I mean, this, what I just did out here was, ended up being over $400,000, and that's only one mile of road. So, this year with the 300,000, I'm going to try to do some of the side roads, and it's just going to be pieces. I'm not going to be able to do the whole road. But my plan is to do some of the side roads.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing no indication for the discussion, we'll vote on Article 13 as presented in the handout. All those in favor of Article 13, please raise your green card. All those against, please raise your red card. Article 13 passes unanimously. Article 35.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 35 as presented in the handout.
Do I have a second? Article 35 is presented and seconded. Can I get a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
I get a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends the narrative for Article 35. The new Police Reform Act is asking all departments to show more transparency between the police and the community they serve. As these changes move forward, all departments will be required to have in place a BWC program and policy. This will bring us in compliance with these anticipated mandates from federal and state police reform legislation. It will allow not only the offices, but our residents, to feel safe and secure in their mutual interactions. It will also assist us further in our attempt to become an accredited law enforcement agency. The amount is a five-year cost that includes a camera upgrade and replacement after three years. All video storage, which is the costiest item, is also included in this request. It is prudent for the town to pass this article this evening, as the cost of implementation will surely be much higher in a few years.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing no indication, we'll vote on Article 35 as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 35 passes.
Mr. Moderator, I will move the article as presented in the handout.
Article's been presented and seconded. Can I get the recommendation, please, of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
Okay, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. Paula Hatch, Ten Oak Place, in chair of Silver Lake. There was just over $312,000 put into stabilization account and slated to be used for capital projects for Silver Lake. This money was part of a separation agreement between Pembroke and Silver Lake. That is the money that would be used to fund this article. The tennis courts need to be rebuilt, and the amount we are asking for is Halifax' portion of that cost to do this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Don Barrows, 33 Ocean Ave. So, what, the total cost is going to be $330,000 for tennis courts?
I'll attempt to find that out. The overall cost to repair the tennis courts, I see you nodding yes, is basically $330,000. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Mary Grabanis, 98 Clyde O'Boasworth Road. Can we find out how many students actually partake in tennis at Silver Lake or are part of the team? Because that is an absurd amount of money to pay for maybe, I think there's maybe 15, 18 kids on a team, max? That's a lot of money to ask Halifax to pitch in, when we just said we're going to try to fund our senior center, and we have other things that are much more important. I think Silver Lake should be doing a lot more things with money than pay for tennis courts. I think there are a lot of things up there they could do. I think this is ridiculous. My opinion.
I don't know how I'll find the answer to that, but I'll try. Do we have any idea what the numbers are?
I don't know the numbers of the teams, but I would also like to point out to town meeting that the tennis courts is used for gym class as well.
Yes, sir. Right up here. Hold on, Jim, I'll be right with you.
Pete Parson, 65 Highland Circle. I watched the debate about this last year. I also know that every year, no matter if it's phys ed classes or if it's tennis court, tennis teams using that, it represents our school around the league. The schools in our league are spending this money. I can tell you a school board itself, just to replace a school board, was $30,000 at the school I work at. This stuff is expensive. It has to have certain standards for it to be used in education, in schools, and in sports. This stuff costs money, and it's not going to get fixed unless we fix it. And the conversation we just had about the stabilization fund is that we want control as a town over these types of costs. But if we want control as a town over these types of costs, every once in a while, this stuff is going to need to be upgraded. And clearly, the school people were here last year advocating for this, and it's coming up again. This is not a problem that's going to go away. These kids are going to need tennis courts. So, I find it, you know, surprising that we want to put this off and put this off. These tennis courts aren't going to go away.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Keegan, Elm Street. So, it's not, our portion's 300, I'm sorry, $110,000. I have two daughters, one in the elementary, one in the middle school. Neither one of them play tennis as a sport right now, but they may. And parents who have children who are tennis players, I believe, will get money, the scholarships out there for college. But as somebody just mentioned as well, it's not just the gym class. It's, you know, it represents other, our Silver Lake school system. People come and they'll see our tennis courts. And I believe that the public is allowed to use those after hours. So, they get a lot of use, and I personally don't think $110,000 is a lot. The gentleman who just spoke before me knows a lot more obvious about tennis than I do, but it makes sense to me, especially for our youth.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Bob McCarthy, 610 Mont Ponce Street. I find this a little confusing on here about the $312,000 was put into the stabilization account and is going to be used for this, but then they're asking for another 110. Are they asking for us to say that 312 that's there, 110, we vote on that for them to use that's in the stabilization account? Or is that actually coming out of like our free money or something?
I'll attempt to find out.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
The money's coming out of the stabilization account that was set aside for capital items to be repaired from Silver Lake.
So, it's out of the, when Pembroke went on their own a few years ago, the money's sitting there. It isn't really coming out of us appropriating anything. It's there.
It was the money that Silver Lake got back from Pembroke from the split. That money came back to the towns, and the town of Halifax decided to put the money in a stabilization account, so the money could be spent on capital items that Silver Lake brought before town meeting.
All right. And I think Steve just paved a mile of road for that much, so I think it's a little high, but, you know.
Last year, I believe that, sorry, Karen Fava, 66 Clyde O'Boasworth. I think last year that we agreed that we wouldn't just come up and say what the project was, that we were looking for money for, that we would allocate what it actually incorporated, right? And I'm actually for the project. I think that we should find out, how much was it last year and what is the increase now? But I really would like to find out, what does it incorporate? Is it fencing? Is it just, you know, is it the netting? Like, we really need to know what things are when we're voting for them. So, if we could find that out, please.
Paula Hatch, Oak Place. So, we anticipated this. A couple of things. First of all, the tri-town meetings enabled us to explain all of our capital needs and the tennis courts being one of them to the three towns. That's why this year, we're standing here and the Finance Committee is supporting this article, and the Selectmen are supporting the article, because we've been transparent, we've overcommunicated, we've walked people through our facilities. We're trying to do it the right way. You know, they're assets of all three towns. Having said all that, I would like to invite up Matt Durkey, who is the Director of Facilities for Silver Lake, because he can speak to the prior woman's questions about exactly what we're doing, because he's coordinating the project.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, sir. Next one.
Hi, Matt Durkey, Director of Facilities for Silver Lake, Regional School District. To the question about the rising costs, the figure that we came to the towns last year in the engineer's proposal included a 20% project contingency. Because we had, in previous drawings, it showed a reserved leaching field underneath the tennis courts. Since then, we have confirmed that that is just for future design use. There's actually no structure under that court. So, the 20% project contingency will, after discussion with the athletic engineer, feels that we're in a good spot with that 20% contingency to move forward with this project. To the prior gentleman's comment about paving the road, a mile of road for the $300,000, we've looked into that as well. We've had paving contractors to look at the project, because, to the gentleman's point, I had the same thought. It's asphalt, let's just throw down some asphalt and throw some paint on it. Paving companies that we've spoken with, we're not comfortable with this type of application of this surface with a finished product to host athletic events on it. It's more involved than just putting down a layer of asphalt. There's a finish, there's a top coat, there's the painting, the ceiling, the athletic equipment. The question regarding the fencing, in order to save costs, we are trying to salvage the majority of the fencing, which is currently in good condition. Sections of fencing will be taken out in order to get the heavy equipment in there and then reinstalled.
Thank you, sir.
Sarah Nobles, 55 Lincoln Street. I just wanted to say, for perspective, we, as part of the Youth and Rec Commission, have been getting quotes for these tennis courts behind the Almetra School, and this quote is right in line with quotes that we have been getting. So, I don't think this is an outrageous number by any means. And our quotes are going up from one year to the next. So, I think if we wait, this is clearly a project that needs to be done, and it's only going to get more expensive. So, I think it makes sense to approve this before the prices get any higher.
All right, thank you. Here's Jean.
Jingle on Cranberry Drive. I want to thank all the speakers, because you actually changed my mind, and I'm going to vote in favor of this project. But I was just wondering, this is coming out of the stabilization account. How much money is in that account? Is it a finite number, or does that get replenished?
I apologize to the previous speaker. I don't have the current amount in there, but that was, it doesn't get replenished. It was the amount of money that came in from the Pembroke Settlements.
I think you changed my mind as well. I just, Mr. Durfee, could you tell me the life expectancy of the courts once it's done?
The life expectancy of the courts falls in line with a lot of asphalt projects, but with the athletic servicing, we're looking at anywhere between 18 to 23 years and upwards of 25.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions, discussions? Seeing no indication of further discussion, just, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Promise, this is the last question. Karen Fava, 66 Clyde O'Boasworth. I just want to know if this is their top priority on that capital needs list.
Thank you.
Paula Hatch, Ten Oak Place. We are taking care of some other items through our own E and D account. This one is too big for us. This one is too big for us to digest. It was too big for us to digest last year. Again, the whole reason we're meeting with the towns through our tri-town meetings is to bring forth all of our needs, get them on the table, discuss them, and prioritize. And again, I think we were successful with that this year because the Selectmen and the Finance Committee both agree that this should be funded.
Thank you. Hey, any further comments? Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Whitney.
Ed Whitney, 110 Stony Way Road. I just wanted to, you know, as far as some of the previous comments that the Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend, that's great. We all as voters take those things into consideration, but we're not here to be a rubber stamp for them. So when the people that are working with the school, as far as a prioritized list, say, well, we talked to them, and we showed them our list, and they said, good, so you guys should all basically vote for it. That's, that's not the way it works. So one of the points I'd like to make is that it would be good for the committee to provide that prioritized capital improvement list to us. And, and if, over the course of the next three, I would imagine they have it over more than just the first year, but what they anticipate over the next three to four years, and provide that as information to the voters.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, I thought you were raising your hand for comment. All right, seeing no indication of further discussion, to make the people aware, this will require a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of Article 33 as presented in the manual, please signify by raising your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. The article passes.
Article 43.
Okay, it's been brought to the attention that we want to adjourn until tomorrow night at 6:30.
Mr. Moderator, I make that motion.
Do I have a second to that motion? I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting to a time certain tomorrow night, May 10th at 6:30 here in the gym. All those in favor, let's just say aye. All those opposed? Yeah, let's go. Good night, everybody.